I'm going to call the Springfield City Council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Pitts.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Stare.
Here.
Counselor Woodrow.
Here.
That's a missionary.
Here, thank you.
We have one item in the work session tonight, which is the affordable housing strategies with Aaron Feifeld and Sandy Belson. And Aaron or Sandy, I don't know who's starting us off.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Sandy Belson. I'm going to start us off this evening and I will turn it over to Aaron. A little bit later. I am the interim planning manager for the city of Springfield and since I started working for the city of Springfield in 2016. We were have been looking at housing issues. Trying to identify what the particular needs are in Springfield. The council developed some housing strategies. And tonight we are focusing on a few of those for which staff would like direction as we continue to implement. The strategies that council identified or make some tweaks to them as we go along. And keeping in mind that. By state law, we will be needing to take another whole relook at our housing needs and analyze those. Needs along with a buildable lands inventory to. Look at the housing capacity in Springfield and we will need to adopt any comprehensive plan amendments. To address those by the end of 2025 and at that time, well, I mean, as you know, from your previous council meeting. There are some inconsistencies between the proposed development code amendments and our comprehensive plan that will need to address. Those policies along with that. And then following that housing capacity analysis, we will focus on a housing production strategy, which is a new requirement. Under state law and they'll have to adopt that by the end of December 26. And around that same time, we'll also be doing a five year update to our consolidated plan, which is. How we use the federal funds in Eugene and Springfield. Federal funds, meaning the CDBG funds, community development block grant. And then our home funds. As part of the home consortium. So that's a little bit of the context of. The where we were and where we're going in terms of addressing housing issues, but for tonight, we have a few particular questions. For you. Outlined in the memo and I'm just going to start in on that first one. And the first question to which we need an answer from council. Is whether we should continue to waive the system development charges for accessory dwelling units. So you started talking about this at your April 4th work session. And for those who may be tuning in, system development charges are those. Fees that we assess at the time of a building permit. To pay for the infrastructure needed to support. That development in the system wide type approach of the infrastructure for capacity. Such as. Sanitary sewer for the city system, stormwater and then transportation. So I put in and corrected graph of the number of ADU land use applications that we've received. Which at the time were about 60 since we had amended the code to make it easier to add ADUs. And you can see the financial impact that that has had. The amount that for one year. How much we waived in fiscal year 2021 to how much we collected in system development charges overall for those three systems. So with that, I will turn it back to the mayor to discuss this first question, since I think if we can go sequentially through the memo, that would be easiest for staff.
All right, and Leonard.
So um, I I think 60 is a considerable bump in the number of applications, isn't it?
Yes, I mean, the previous decade, I think we had a handful.
Yeah, I I was remembering single digits. Am I am I remembering that wrong?
That's correct.
Okay, well, I I I don't see the downside to. Encouraging people to putting to to put ADUs on their property. So I I'm all in on continuing the SDCs for right now.
Mary Lee.
Uh, yes, I am too. I I looked through this and read through it and I'm I'm comfortable going forward if all of a sudden we have. You know, a voluminous amount of ADUs, we may have to revisit this, but right now I'm comfortable with going along with it.
Joe.
Yeah, I am too. And in fact, I know that we voiced the same concern or actually the same topic came up the last time we met regarding this and all of us were in favor. Most of us were in favor of. Continuing this program. So I will reiterate that I'm still in favor of this program and continuing it. In fact, I know that the year, the three year mark was discussed at that meeting. And I would encourage that we look at seriously, look at and. Concur with a five year program. I don't see any downside to it. It's it's housing and. It doesn't mean we can't reverse, but at this point we can, as far as I'm concerned, we can go go five years without a lot of risk. And if there are people feel there may be some extenuating risk or whatever, we can put a. 400,000 or 300,000 cap on it or 500,000. Over the, you know, extended out over five years. And I think that it's a drop in a buck compared to what we're spending on other areas.
So I'm hearing general consensus that you want to continue the waiver, so I can bring a resolution back for formal council action. Do you want it to read a like five years with an annual check in or how would you like that structured?
Yeah, I have it come come back as a five year with an annual with an annual check in and. You know, the annual checking could be through a memo, right? Like unless something's particularly there, there's an issue that jumps up with it, but we need to give some, we need to give people certainty and clarity about where our view as a council is about this type of housing. In five years seems reasonable.
Okay, thank you. So then moving on to the next question, it also involves waiving. System development charges. Although in this case, we're actually proposing to structure the waiver as a forgivable loan. And this would be for income qualified housing. That is built by a nonprofit organization that targets home buyers with low incomes. So I've put in the memo there what low income 80% of median annual income would be. So you can see the income levels of that type of family and then what the SDCs would typically be for a single unit dwelling. I mean, it depends, but that gives you a ballpark idea of around $10,000, $11,000 per unit. In for the three systems and we're estimating that there would probably not be more than. You know, 10 or so a year. So I see some questions.
Yeah. So Sandy, before we start with this one, did I know that you cited Habitat for Humanity and. One of the oh, the C Street Co-op. Is this something that they've requested or you or is that just simply us looking for an example?
Well, I mean, lots of developers request reduced or waived. I mean, that that's what we hear most from developers when we're talking about what would help make housing more affordable or more practical. So. But your question is specific to the C Street Co-op or?
Or or Habitat for Humanity, right? Like, because in the memo, you're refer you're referring to them and I and I couldn't quite tell if it was an example or we had Habitat for Humanity or the C Street Co-op group coming here and saying. And asking us specifically to do that.
So I'm I'll call a friend with Aaron Feifeld here who's with me and see if she's had that. Formal request the reason, but to answer. The reason that we listed those is because we know that those have projects that are likely to come toward us. I mean, Habitat has the 12 lots already that they own and. They are getting ready to be building those homes. And then we've been in discussion with the developer of C Street Co-op of wanting to do a similar project elsewhere. So those are two that we know. Are likely to happen in the short term. Aaron.
I'll just add, I think the question I usually get from any developer is sort of like, what funds are available? I don't know that it's specific SDCs, but it's sort of like, what do you have that could help me as a nonprofit develop? And so I think as Sandy was putting this together, sort of like, well, SDCs or something, we're helping in this way. This could be one of those tools we apply toward affordable homeownership.
Thank you. First, I really appreciate the way you all encapsulated this because I remember when we had this conversation last time and we were like, I was one of those people who was trying to wrap my head around. What it was that you were proposing and asking. And so I just really appreciated this because it was like, oh, this makes a lot more sense. And I can see what the low income rate is. I'm also I'm completely in supportive of this because I think this is a great way to just sort of. Get our partners to build more affordable housing and I really like the like resale affordability for at least five years. So I'm in support of this.
Mary Lee.
Um, I just I I had more of a clarifying question because I'm in support of this as well, but I'm just curious. The steps of the process for someone to get the forgivable loan. How does how does that work?
So we haven't nailed down the approach and I think it would in part depend on the developer. But again, I'm going to see if Aaron wants to add in on on this.
Sure, I think we, there are other certainly with the with other federal funds that we give out both to individual homeowners and also to other nonprofit developers. We have a similar. Sort of insurance policy in that sense to say, hey, we're giving this money, asking for this in return. I think there are different ways to structure and I might have Christina weigh in on this. If a lien on the property is the best way that. If they wanted to go ahead and sell the property, that is going to come up on a title report to say, hey, this, you know, you owe the city of Springfield, whatever it is, $10,000. Once that has been met, that period of time that we're asking in return, then we can sort of satisfy that lien and we could take it off the property. If there's another mechanism that seems to work for the developer, but also works for the city and certainly if it's a promissory note or something else that works too. But that was sort of something that is an automatic trigger that's going to be tied to the land.
So at what point does the federal home funds come in?
In this case, most likely not. So for, you know, homeownership is really hasn't, we haven't figured out with the new home rules. How to use those federal dollars for homeownership. So this would be a way to support these kind of projects that we can't seem to figure out how to support right now with the federal home dollars.
Okay, my only other question and it's, I don't think it's been addressed, but it just flew through my mind as I was looking at this stuff. Have we ever considered discounted SDCs? Um, in in a situation like this, rather than rather than waiving them completely or. Or of signing them completely is or do we ever end up in the middle anywhere?
I don't know that we've ever done that, but we certainly could do that.
Okay, it's it's a it's a consideration. Especially if we're working with somebody who wants to develop. As opposed to just waiving them completely or placing a lien, it might be worth, you know, thinking about.
Leonard.
Okay, those were my, those were my questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. I I wanted to ask her, I I see we're going to be coming up on RVs next. Are we going to be talking about different types of transitional housing at some point? And just different proposed types?
I mean, for the for tonight's work session, we have the RVs. We don't really have any other. Transitional housing topics prepared for discussion tonight, but that doesn't mean we can't take counsel direction and in terms of what you want us to work on.
Let let me plant a seed here. I've been doing a little bit of research at the behest of some home, some homeless advocates. There are used rail containers that are available on eBay and. Throughout the internet for between 1,500 and $2,000, brand new, they're $6,000. And as near as I can tell, the only thing that it would take to make them habitable would be to reverse the way that they open so that they could open outward instead of inward. Other than that, I mean, they seem fairly, they 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 seem like a fairly viable way. Of putting people up for the short term, if not the long term, and I'd love to find out what would be needed in order to make them compliant with code.
So Counselor Stare, are you assuming that they would be allowed as well as the RVs in that on private property? Is that how you're thinking that they would be?
I I I was thinking, I actually, I'm I'm open to where to put them. I mean, I I my my main concern is whether they would actually be code compliant.
Well, let me let me drop in and make a suggestion here. If like, if you're doing some additional reading, I think. Probably the best thing to do would be to give that to one of the housing developers and have if somebody's interested in looking at that as a project. Then they can develop something and come forward and and have something to respond to them like otherwise, we're just going to sort of conceptually ask the staff to respond to. All the different types of housing that we've got out there.
Well, I I think that the developers, you know, they're, God bless them. They don't always have the greatest imaginations, you know, and so. They're not sure, you know, that they're going to be making 100%, you know, like a a lot of profit on them. And so they get pushed to the back burner. So what I would like is just to have some sort of idea that we could go to the developers with. On how on how much it would actually cost to make them code compliant.
So just one more thing, when you're talking code compliant, there's really two main codes here. There's the development code. And that would be more of a land use aspect. And so. And then there's the building code. I think it's going to take a lot more work to get them to comply with the building code. I'm not sure that's possible.
That's the one.
Just to make a distinction there, if if it's going to be treated as a dwelling unit, then it would need to comply with the building code.
Okay.
So so again, like I've I've been through a couple of these conversations because I've asked the question about 3D printing houses and a lot of different things. Yeah, you've got some good connections with with folks on the on the developer side is really like. You know, and and it and it could be carry it forward, right? Like, but like having somebody really look at it and kind of mock up a project. And, you know, would give people a chance to react to it because I think there's a lot of questions.
We might be able to get Habitat involved. I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, any anyway, the the to to get back to the subject at hand, I'm definitely in favor of extending the SDC waiver on. The low income projects too. Thanks.
Joe.
No, I was just going to jump in on that last conversation just a little bit in regards to. You know, developers. There's a misconception out there that developers make a ton of mon- ton of money on everything they do. And I I can assure you that that is is very rarely the case. And that developers. Develop whenever they can even show any profit just to stay in business. So I just want to, you know, I I just don't want people to start thinking that developers are out there making a ton of money hand over fist. When frankly, when there's SDC charges out there, developments don't happen because of the the SDC rates because they can't make it, they can't pencil it out. So there is a fine line and I and I. It's difficult for staff to try to figure out where it goes. And here we are. In just a couple of months, all of our rates for those SDCs are going to go up 5%. Plus, they're still going to get charged for the technology fee. And every time we turn around and and rubber stamp a rate increase of of the cost of living or 5% or 3%. It lessens the ability for people to construct here. So I think that 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 is not considered enough and frankly, I would like to see a year where we don't raise those SDCs just so we can get some houses built. And answer the supply that it create a supply where people can actually afford to move into. As opposed to subsidize government owned, nonprofit owned property properties. Where the all the nonprofit properties do not pay the city of Springfield any taxes. So. Every place we build that is subsidized typically, yet it doesn't, it harms the city and in a way where we can. It costs us more to. Cover these places and provide infrastructure, etc. It's just a, it's a heck of a. It's a it's a heck of a. Trend that's a dog chasing its tail.
Did you have anything else? Oh, your hand can back down. I guess. I've got a a couple more questions here. When you think about the amount of what when I when I read the packet and when you sort of think about the amount of staff work associated to administer a program like that. Is there? But is there a way we can get to sort of the same results with a more streamlined program, right? Because you've got liens, we've got to track it, we've got to update it. I guess I'm open to something a little bit more streamlined, even if there's, even if it's a little bit more open ended, that would avoid the the administrative overhead.
Well, I think if you were not concerned about maintaining the affordability over a certain amount of time. You could just waive it on the upfront end and then if the homeowner decides to sell it. Two years later. And we are not trying to recoup that or maintain affordability like we've proposed for five years, that would remove any of the tracking involved.
Okay. The second question that I think I that that I had is like, all the fees. That, you know, SDCs are an easy thing to go to, right? But when you, when you talk to, when you talk to developers, it's sort of the cost, it's the cost of land. Right? And having having land available to address and and build housing on. So is there? If our goal is to build more total housing and get people into homeownership for the first time, again. Is SDCs the right way to go at it? Or is it the only real lever that we have? So is there a different? Is there a different lever that we could pull that sort of helps push people into their their first set of before of homeownership the first time? That would be a little bit more effective.
So we have the shop program. But but that's for people that are wanting to purchase a home. It's not necessarily encouraging adding new housing to the stock. It's a first time home buyer loan and Aaron could speak more about that. There is the at the toward the end of the memo, there is a tax exemption. That does address homeownership that we. Can explore further. I had not made that a priority, given the previous work and support from council on the. Tax exemption for housing diversity or the MUPD program. But there is another. Tax exemption for homeownership, but I frankly have not heard that that is the key. Issue. It's really the, it's the upfront cost more so than the ongoing. Cost of homeownership that's keeping people from getting in. So. My sense from talking with developers and Aaron can add her perspective as well is that. Whatever we can do to reduce the upfront cost for building housing or buying the house initially. Depending whether we're helping the developer or the homeowner directly is what's going to make housing more affordable for homeownership.
Corey.
Thanks. So I think. I think there are a couple of pieces to this that I just want to just just reiterate. Because there's no one answer, right? There's no one thing that's going to get us all the different layers of housing that we need. So we're like looking at what are the things that we can control? But one of the things that is challenging is to maintain the affordability of housing. And I know that if we brought in folks from Habitat for Humanity, they could talk to the ways that they've tried to mitigate that over the years because. You could get into a Habitat house and then in two years you could turn around and sell that, which is, you know, it it helps to build wealth for people, but it doesn't maintain affordable housing stock. And so even though we might not, you know, build a million houses with this, the houses that we did, the the fact that we were able to maintain that affordability for a minimum of five years. Is a key piece to folks moving from one step to another. Along the line of like homeownership. So that's that's part of it for me too, is like, how do we maintain some of that affordability? And we don't know what the market's going to do. And at the same time, we're saying yes to, you know, Mark Holme Meadows and we're saying yes to other kinds of housing. It's just like, how how do we look at all of those pieces and knowing that we only have so much that we can control? So I'm also open to looking at, do we waive fees in other ways? But I think that these these sort of. No interest or whatever loans are a way to get folks to like build that housing and keep it affordable.
Thank you. Damian.
Hi, this is somewhat similar to. Counselor Ravi's. Well, it's kind of related, but you know, so one thing we talk a lot about affordability, but we never talk about. You know. I'm trying to think of the word. Uh, I mean, you know, to culture issues that might keep people from wanting to live in a specific area. As well as, you know, just, it seems we focus so much on getting houses that we don't focus on quality of life ever. And, you know, I think a lot of people to include me, somebody who lives in an apartment, would wear their weight to be able to have. Things like AC, which isn't really a thing in Oregon, or to have parking lots, which. Everybody is anti because it takes some space, but. I I I'm all about housing, you know, I've never actually lived in a house. And so a lot of this I can't really relate to, but at the same time, you know, thinking about, you know, colleagues that I know who are looking to stay here. You know, one thing that's pushing them out is small things, you know, like. Like I said, like parking lots or not no AC and I would just hope that we. I understand that a lot of stuff's going to cost more, but also, you know, I I think small things are going to make people stay. Then also add to the cultural pieces, like how do we care to cultural people who actually want to. Move here and 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 this is, you know, big picture in the sky, but we talk a lot about. You know, housing, which to me is directly correlated to careers. And so I think a lot of times the language around. We need jobs in Springfield. No, we need careers because jobs don't pay mortgages. We need careers that are going to make people want to stay. They can move up. And so I think that these are all connected, you know, once again, this might be a big picture thing. But I I think we're missing the mark and we're so focused on building more houses that we're not thinking about quality of life for. Various demographics of people.
Okay, so anybody else have additional comments? So Sandy and Aaron, I think you're you're, I'm seeing a head nod to go ahead and design a program for this. And then bring bring it back to us. Again, I, you know, I think the affordability question is a real question and going out into that five year window makes a little bit of sense. When we see it again. I'm open to to looking for places where we can sort of shave off the 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 our our requirements to administer it. And, you know, like, and whatever that looks like, right? That's up to you guys. Joe.
Thank you, Sean. I just, this sounds like a broken record, but I'm going to say it again. So if you can, please, as staff, can you go to your fellow colleagues in the other partner agencies of the quote unquote Team Springfield? And approach them. And ask to see if they could go to their elected boards. And please ask to see if they would be willing to participate to some degree in this program. We can't, it it just simply cannot, if we're going to really see any significant movement. It can't be resting on our shoulders and us be able to have to take the whole pill and try to swallow it. It it's, it really takes some partnership. And if we really do have colleagues, I'm sure there's some people out there listening right now. That know exactly what I'm saying and it would be great to have those other agencies that collect SDCs. To simply look at the big picture and know that every property that is tax based. Back to what my previous argument was in regards to nonprofits, but I'm talking about tax based properties. To see if they would do some sort of discount or similar program, just something that will get that, get some energy going. And those properties that are built that will pay property taxes will come back to every one of our partners. In a distant, you know, in into perpetuity. So it's an, it's a great investment. So it's an, it's a great investment to solve a current problem that will help them into perpetuity and help these families, exactly what Damian was talking about, career families that are trying to buy homes that, um, it, it, it adds to the strength and the health of the community. And we got to have that in order for us to really have a substantial housing program for every person. Okay, I'm done.
All right. Let's keep on going. Um, what's the next question, Sandy?
So the next question, um, we had a preview from Counselor Stare. This is RVs as temporary housing. So council previously, um, passed a resolution that basically said that the city would not enforce the prohibitions against people living in RVs on private property outside of where they're already allowed. I mean, they're allowed in RV parks, they're allowed in, um, as part of our overnight parking program. Uh, but for private property owners who would like to be able to provide some temporary housing or allow someone with an RV to park the RV on their property, um, you had said, go ahead and not enforce the codes against that. So I'm checking back in um, to see if that is something you would like to continue. Uh, or if it's something you would like to make permanent. Um, and if so, we would explore how to do that. Or if you want to, um, transition back to how it used to be where we would prohibit that type of temporary housing.
Merrily.
There. Um, I'm good, I'm good with, I, I'm good with either two or three. Uh, continue to allow the RVs on private property with a check-in, um, in, in the future, future check-in. Or, um, look at code amendments that would allow it. And the only, the only restriction I would put on it was there not to be rentals. That they would be, um, family, extended family, friends or what, however, but not allowed to be an established rental, but allowed, you know, i- it's extra room for, for people who need to, to live in, you know, in a small space for a while. But I'm okay continuing with what we've got as long as there aren't any rentals involved. And I'm okay if, if others want to look at it as a, as a code amendment.
Joe?
Hi, thank you. Um, I, I, uh, agree in parts with, uh, Merrily. I think it's been a good program. It was much needed. We had the, the holiday fire, holiday farm fire that was bad. Uh, I don't think it's, it's, we haven't recovered, quote unquote, recovered from that. I know that there's several homes still being built up the river. Um, so there's still that demand. Um, I'm, I'm okay. Well, there's a couple of things. I want to know if we have any numbers, you know, what kind of numbers are we looking at? And, and I thought we originally were talking about a permit, but I think we said no because of the amount of staff time it would take to try to have some sort of program like that. But I think, uh, I'm okay with pushing it out another year. I, I, I don't think you could get me over the edge to even look at it permanently. I don't think that's the answer, and I don't think it's a healthy condition for the city. But I do think that the city is, is needs and people need these things as a stopgap. And, um, I would, I would look at it and get some sort of check in for the future and, and I don't know how the rest of council feels. I sure would like to, at least some point, know, uh, how many, what numbers are we talking? I mean, is it two hundred twenty fifty or five thousand? I don't, I don't have a clue, but I do know that lately I haven't seen RVs parked on the street with the, the water hoses and electrical lines running to the, to the mobile, uh, the trader, trader, mobile traders, or whatever they call them, travel traders parked on the street. So there, it's, it's starting, you know, once you give kind of an inch, sometimes it's going to start getting pushed. I know that there's been many uh, conversations on social media and photographs of, there's, uh, uh, a significant issue of mobile homes and not mobile homes, but the travel traders and RVs now uh, parking on streets and then leaving and, and moving to next street and then coming back to the street. They get cited and they continue this move back and forth thing. So it's, the population of that type of activity is getting larger. So I don't know if it's, it could become a problem and I don't want to promote that, but I don't think I could be convinced on a permanent basis, but I can certainly think it makes sense to go for another year with a check-in.
Thank you. Sandy or Erin, can, can you respond to a couple of those, like, about the numbers? And, you know, maybe a- any issues about, uh, folks being out, like, having things in the public part of the street?
So in terms of the numbers, uh, Counselor Pictionary is right that we had talked about a permit but decided not to because of the administrative burden. And so therefore we don't really have any idea of how many are out there. Um, and there would not be an easy way to determine that. So what I can say is that, um, as I put in the memo, we really have not had complaints. Um, unless the people were not following the established guidelines or there were other issues on the property already, and this is adding to it. So, um, whether that's because people, there aren't very many out there, or that people that, that are out there are complying with the guidelines or, or being good neighbors, I don't know. In terms of the streets, that's really a police matter that doesn't touch our department. So I really can't speak to what quantity or, um, response has been, that would be, um, the police would respond to the on-street parking issues.
All right. Thank you. Leonard?
I, I think I'm seeing a potential revenue stream here. I mean, uh, we've got a lot of parking spaces in the right of ways around these industrial parks like, um, Sean, I know that you walk up and down, um, Shelley Street a lot. And I mean, there would be, you know, upward of a hundred spaces if we chose to use them. And, um, had that, I, I know that the people who own these RVs, they're paying more than a hundred dollars a month in gas and citations, just trying to stay one jump ahead of the constable. So, um, wonder if, um, it might actually be profitable for the city to rent these, uh, rent these spaces out as long as they're not being used.
So did you have any other comments? Um, I, yeah, I, I don't think that's a good idea. So here's the, here's the, you know,
I'm surprised.
I know you're shocked there. The two things that, that I get really concerned about in the right of way, right? One of them is, uh, when, and Salem ran into this problem, I don't know, a little while ago, that they had, uh, they had a car accident against some, some folk, uh, campers that were in the right of way. So from a safety perspective, I'm, I would be really concerned about, you know, letting people sort of either camp, stay, renting spots in, in the right of way, just from a management perspect, from a management perspective. I just don't see a way I could support that. Merrily?
Two, two things. One, I live on a small cross-section of streets. Uh, what, probably one full street and a couple of half streets connected to me. I would say I have at least eight houses in my, uh, my development, uh, with, that have, uh, RVs on their, uh, next to their driveway hooked up for people to live in. Um, and it's not causing a problem. I, I don't see a problem if we put it out there that people can do that and just say, but don't park on the street. If you park on the street, you're going to get a citation. And just make it very restrictive. You can do it on the property next to the driveway. However, you do accommodate it on the property itself, but as soon as you hit the street and hook up or leave it there longer than, what is it, forty-eight hours or whatever the time limit is for people to, to, you know, fix their, get their RV all equipped so they can go on a vacation or something. There, there's a certain amount of time they can have it on the street. Um, I can't remember what it is, twenty-four or forty-eight hours. Um, but as long as beyond that, if, if somebody parks on the street and leaves it there, then it just, so people know ahead of time. But then it's okay if they want to put it on the, on their property, uh, to be a, to be a, um, uh, an availability for, for extra housing and stuff. The other part of it is that if we do do, if we do go ahead and do this and extend it, there's nothing wrong with having an annual check-in to see if there's issues, there are problems. If an issue arises, then it can always come back for discussion or for, to talk about concerns. Um, but I, I like the idea of extending it and giving people that option. Um, but I think it's not a problem, uh, keeping the restriction, keeping them off the street and just ma- you know, giving people, you're giving people something to be able to accommodate, but at the same time, you're saying, but you can only go this far. You can't take full advantage of by, you know, taking up the street and, and being where you're not supposed to be.
Thanks. Um, so I also don't want them on the street. But I, I'm, I'm actually with Joe. That I, I don't want to do it forever. I know. It's like, I would rather, because I mean, ideally, we want to do things to encourage more stable housing, right? And so if we're doing all of these other things to encourage stable housing, I would also really like us to have some sort of a baseline and be tracking what's happening so that what we'd like to see is less and less of that. Unless there is again, like something that happens, like a fire or something where we need to pull out all of the stops. Um, I, I, I would rather look at it like, say, okay, we're going to extend this for a year and then we're going to come back and and talk about it. And maybe within that time, kind of identify the things that we want to be looking at to kind of measure whether it's successful and whether we're doing the other things we need to do to provide better transitional housing. Cause I mean, it, it is a way of transitional housing. But again, it's only available to so many people in so many neighborhoods, depending on if you know people. So it's not really a, like a, uh, an equitable way to deal with it. So I would, I, I'm, yes, off the streets. Um, also maybe more short-term or more transitional so that we can just see if it's, if we're moving away from it.
Steve, did you want to get in here?
Yeah, I, I consider transitional housing. Who wants to live there forever? Uh, eventually they'll work, work themselves up to a permanent housing. I, and it's all on some, uh, private property, not in the streets. I think Joe was talking about moving them around in the streets. I think it's a Eugene problem. And, uh, every time I see one of those, I see one or two people that are not on the streets because they're in that. So, uh, I support it.
All right. Merrily, and then we'll see if we can't get, get it wrapped up into some sort of package for, you know, direction for the staff here.
I just, I look at it right now as one of those layers that we can offer. If we get to the point of where we don't need that layer, that would be great. But when, if you're talking about extended family, you're talking about seniors who no longer can function in the house by themselves, but if they can live on, in an RV next door to their, and they don't have thirty thousand dollars to put an ADU on the property, something like that. I just, I just look at it as one more option that's available uh, to provide housing and, um, and socialization. So somebody's not out there all by themselves, but they have an opportunity to be amongst people. And I think that's really important too. So I, I think it's a layer we need to keep until there's a reason not to have it.
Okay. So let's see if we can't wrap this up in direction. So we, we definitely want to keep, keep doing it. We want to check in, in about, in, in another year. Um, we, some sort of data, if we can get it. I know Sandy, we, we opted out of a permit a little while ago. Um, I don't know if we can get us, you've guys have a year to figure it out, but some sense of how many, how many are actually out there? And then probably paired with, with, um, some sort of data on whether or not we're getting calls from either the PD or, you know, in, into planning about it. Did I miss anything? All right. I think we're ready for the next question.
All right. And I'll turn it over to Erin for the next one on the home, uh, ARP funding.
Sandy, uh, good evening, Mayor Council. Uh, I'm here tonight, um, to provide information on a new source of one-time funding um, and just making space available if you have any questions. Um, so recently Congress has approved a new one-time funding for housing for people experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. Um, this is through the American Rescue Plan um, and coming under, through the Department of Housing and Urban Development to jurisdictions who already receive federal home dollars. So we are creatively calling this funding source Home ARP. Um, so this is actually coming through the Home Consortium, which is Mayor, uh, Mayor Van Gordon and Counselor Rodley sit on that for Springfield, along with Mayor Venice and Counselor Sample for Eugene. And so the decisions happened there, but the mayor and council Radley wanted to make sure this body was aware of that funding source. So, um, I'll just kind of walk through, we are receiving as a, as a just, as a consortium between Eugene and Springfield, about four point seven million dollars of one-time funding. Our annual allocation as a consortium is usually around one point three million dollars. So this is a significant sort of three and a half times of what we normally receive on an annual basis. Um, because it's coming through the American Rescue Plan, it is similar to home funds. Um, but it also has some differences and part of that difference is the target population, specifically targeting folks who are experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness, but also those who may be fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence. Those at greatest risk of housing instability, um, with attention to veterans. The other piece that's slightly different with these one-time dollars are the ways that we could spend these funds. Uh, we could certainly put these funds toward the development of rental housing, which is similar to our, um, annual home funds. We can also put these funds toward the development of non-congregate shelter for the homeless. We could also apply funds towards supportive services of nonprofits serving this particular population through this housing. Uh, we can provide operating assistance for nonprofits, and we could also, uh, potentially put these funds toward tenant-based rental assistance. So that is kind of the overarching possibilities of the funding source. Uh, but part of the American Rescue Plan requirements under home is sort of needing us to go out and do outreach to local stakeholders, um, including affordable housing developers, social service providers, and then also doing a bunch of data analysis, both with sort of census data and then also our local service providers. Um, I'll pause, Counselor Woodrow, I see your hand up. We're already there. That's fine.
Go ahead, Merrily.
Get that microphone in. It likes to hide at the top of my screen. Um, the question I had was, um, the, it being a, the, being a consortium, do Eugene and Springfield have to do the same thing?
No.
Okay. So have we determined what would be, best benefit Springfield from these funds?
So, yeah, yeah. So Counselor Radley and the mayor are sort of looking at the outreach that's been done and the data analysis that's been done. They are recommending that Springfield put a draft allocation and put, put our dollars toward permanent rental housing development with some social services for those first few years, given the population.
And could you define rental housing development for me?
Sure. That's what we do already currently with the home funds. That is sort of creating permanent housing. Um, that is sort of, in many cases, a nonprofit may own it and then sort of making sure that rents are set at a affordable rent for a income-qualified household. So if that household is only making fifty percent of area median income, then those rents, rents need to be sent at a lower set at a low enough level that would make it affordable for them to live there.
So it would be similar to Habitat or Square One without ownership?
Yeah. I mean, we have those examples, like recently St. Vincent de Paul with the Myrtlewood or Royal Building downtown. Those are examples. Yeah.
Okay, okay. All righty. Thank you. Yeah.
Leonard?
Thanks, Sean. Um, well, I'm, I'm looking at two, three, four, and five, and they're dependent to varying degrees of housing already being available. And right now, I mean, we just had a fire that destroyed some of the last units that were available at six to seven hundred dollars for rent in Springfield. So it seems to me it's sort of incumbent on us to encourage number one, uh, development of the housing so that we can start to worry about the social services and all the wraparound stuff that we're proposing in the further, uh, steps.
Yep. Number one was, um, what our local providers and, um, both affordable housing developers and providers, um, said was the most important. Um, and kind of bore out also with the data to say, yes, those units are needed.
Right. I agree. Thank you. Joe?
Thank you. Um, so I, I don't have a problem with that. I support that. But although I do think that we need to, instead of throwing it all that one direction, which it seems like many things we're doing is we're putting right towards affordable housing, which is fine, but I'm fearful of people that are struggling to stay in their current rented properties. And it gets, it gets so uh, financially burdensome to people that are getting ready to get booted out of an apartment because of some blip on their radar financially or whatever. It seems like we should have some, a, a stronger safety net for those folks. And, uh, and I haven't seen anything else in all these different programs we're talking about. Talk about rental assistance or, and, and survival money for them. And I, I, I think And I, I, I think we are really, those have fallen off our radar and I'd not like to see that. I'd like to see that um, supplemented. I know that the county did have something like that. I think that's gone now. So, is that, am I correct?
Yeah, I mean, actually, the city actually put, I want, I'm pulling this, I wanna say about two hundred and fifty thousand of its CDBG CARES Act money toward rent assistance when that first happened. I know the county and then certainly the state. Um, but yeah, I'd have to look into, like you said, how much of that is still being funded.
I think it's, it was my understanding uh, from some folks out in my neighborhood that are renters and whatnot, that, that um, that's no longer there. So if it isn't, then I would like to see some go in and, and to help Springfield citizens um, from this bu- from this bucket. And um, and if I'm wrong, then that's great. I, I don't mind being wrong when it comes to that. But if I'm not, then I would like to make sure that, that we have some sort of continued safety net.
Okay, and then maybe I'll just mention the process here. So we have not um, published the draft allocation yet. So the plan for next steps in May would be for the Home Consortium to sort of put forward the draft and then that needs to go through a thirty-day public comment period with a public hearing. And then in June, come to the consortium. So in that, if you're okay with this draft being published as is, we can sort of do research on where um, that support additionally for.
Yeah, I just, I just, I just don't wanna see total focus on investment in rental properties as opposed to rental assistance. I, I just don't want it to see um, that wither up and die on the vine. And if it does, I'd like to see who and why and what they said. Thank you.
Steve?
I don't know what's the right place to bring this up. I just thought that those that apply to, for a place to rent, it costs forty-five dollars for the application and it's non-refundable. It's a pretty big hit on those on those people. I don't think there's anything we can do about it, but I, it's, it is a problem.
Alright, thank you. Joe?
Stephen, glad you've mentioned that. That's a good point. A, a lot of companies do charge what they call an application fee. I know some landlords very closely that do not and have never charged a fee because of that reason. A person in a gross, but I have heard in some cases where a landlord will, will advertise a place for rent and sit back and take applications all month long. And they can make a ton of money doing that. But there is rules out there that people need to make sure they're aware of through some of these, uh, what's that, Aaron, maybe you know the um, Eugene Springfield.
Springfield Eugene Tenants Association.
Yes, that's it. They have the right name correctly. Springfield Eugene Advocacy that we need to really make sure that people out there that are looking for, for rental properties that there's some rules out there and the law says about, I shouldn't say talk like an attorney, but there's, there's rules out there that say that if you apply for rent and you are, uh, you meet the eligibility requirements, they must rent it to you instead of taking that money. So there, I, I agree. It's, it's just a big scam out there and, and we should do what we can to, to eliminate that.
So, alright, I think um, we've got the direction that we need for the Home Consortium. So let's move on to the next one, Sandy.
Sure, so the next topic are property tax exemptions. So there are several listed here in your memo. Uh, one of which has been more fully fleshed out, but I'll just skip to the next couple. Um, and then come back to the one that I really need more direction on. So we, I was incorrect at your April fourth meeting. We do have one project that has taken advantage of the reinstatement of the low-income rental housing property tax exemption. And that is the Myrtlewood that Aaron just mentioned, thirty-five units of affordable housing on Main Street developed by St. Vincent de Paul. Um, and one of the reasons that we haven't had more use of that goes back to that needing to find the land on which to develop uh, those rental housings. Then there are the two other property tax exemptions which we will explore in the fall, um, and come back to you with more information on those. One of those is to provide uh, nonprofit corporations who provide low-income housing to, to give those nonprofits a tax, property tax exemption. Um, so that is not in place currently, but it could be. And then uh, the single-unit housing tax exemption, and that's the one I was referring to earlier that could be applied in an ownership situation. So we'll come back to those in the fall with more information. But what I um, am looking for direction from you now is on the one that's, um, we've been working on over the past number of years. Um, what we're calling the Housing Diversity Tax Exemption. And this is the same um, statute that Eugene uses for their MPT. So this would be for areas that are uh, near transit. So transit-oriented areas and given previous direction, those areas would include downtown, along Mohawk uh, along Q Street and along Main Street. And then last uh, month, we added the Marcola Road as directed uh, by Counselor Pictionary. So for this program, uh, the developer would need to show that they could not make the project pencil but for the property tax exemption. With, and that exemption is for a maximum of ten years, although it could be less. In the past, you've talked about maybe limiting it to five years. And this is where uh, some of Counselor Pitts's ideas about livability could come in because the city can establish some public benefits that it would like to see in return. So the, these tax exemptions can be for market rate units. They could also be for low-income housing that has a contract to be for income-qualified. So it could be either way. Um, those public benefits that you would um, could require, could depend on the area of town. So if there are, is a deficit of a particular service or amenity in one part of the town, we could establish the public benefit for that area. Or it could be a benefit um, that we look at and, and apply citywide. I've given you some examples of some of those public benefits. And in previous discussions, which has been a few, a couple years ago since we've really gotten into this. Um, council had indicated a strong design uh, focus with an improved quality of the neighborhood uh, to keep the program broad and fairly simple for administrative purposes. So as we continue to work on this program and bring it back to you for your further consideration this fall, um, I'm looking to you to see if you have any additional guidance at this time as we uh, develop this further.
Sandy, I've got one clarification about the area since I know w- we've produced maps in the past and so it's just sort of description here. Uh, when you say downtown, when I remember that conversation, I remember following what we would think of as the traditional downtown and then going up and including the Island Park area. Is that, am I remembering that accurately?
Yes, the, at the, at your work session, which I believe was right before the pandemic, you opted for the biggest downtown area, which would include the entire urban renewal district as well as um, and so it's bigger than what we have for the vertical housing tax exemption that's in place now. So this um, would replace that tax exemption and include a larger area. And include some of that multi-family that goes up along Pioneer Parkway, um, and then over toward Island Park, as you said.
Okay, perfect. Cory.
Thank you. Um, I'm really interested in seeing how we develop this out. And I appreciated the list of the, the public benefits. And I think that you're absolutely right that this is a place where um, some of the things that Counselor Pitts is reminding us of constantly is a place where we could say, where do, what, what do we value now and going forward? Um, and some of the things that jump out for me, just thinking of like current things are definitely like the childcare facilities and this sort of making sure if, if someone was going to build and, and in, include those in what they were building would be fabulous. And I think back to um, sort of multi-use space and so many, many years ago, cause I'm old. Um, the, the housing that was in downtown Eugene that was able, people could have micro businesses and also live there and also be downtown. And so I think there's these creative uses of space that would be really great to, to encourage with that. So again, it's sort of part of the toolbox. But I think we can look at like, what, what do we really need to see in this, in this community and what would increase the livability? Um, that would make it really sort of snazzy for folks to want to do.
So Sandy, what kind of direction are you looking for? Are you looking for us to describe the public benefit that we want? Or give you kind of general direction on how to develop the public benefit?
Whatever direction you wanna give, we'll take.
Okay, um, my, my read through the public benefit would be to be as open and flexible as possible, right? Like, it would be really easy for us to say, this is the public benefit you have to provide for each one, you know, each area. I would actually be probably more in favor of asking, giving them a list and saying, hey, provide, you know, we're looking to, we're looking for you to choose one public benefit off this list and it's, you know, and, and provide that. Because it could, like, it just could depend by situation. Joe?
Thanks, Sean. Um, an idea that is actually kind of been floating out there, but I think makes a lot of sense right here for community good is to have uh, regional or parts of the city where there can be a community center of some sort that's running, but run by a nonprofit, perhaps by a high school. Um, that where the, the kids from that high school have a place to go and that center can offer counseling and after, and offer just a safe place to go. And I think Sean knows exactly what I'm talking about. That may be, and I think everyone, Aaron knows what I'm talking about, that this may be um, a nice fit for a program that, that some folks are looking at out in Thurston. Um, just someplace for the, for kids to go and to, and to get some mental health or counseling with necessary or need be to help mitigate some of this suicidal thoughts, et cetera, all those different issues that, that, that those uh, kids that are in, that are in transition to, um, that suffered. But there's people out there that wanna do it. They just need some financial kickstart. But Aaron, Aaron knows the information. I'm, I'm beating around the bush, but there's an organization out there. I think this would be a perfect fit.
Alright, anybody else? So next steps on this one, it sounds like you guys are gonna work on it over the summer and then we'll get more details about what that would look like. Coming into, into the fall.
Correct. And then uh, assuming council is still on board with this, um, once we checked back with you with more detail about the program, then we would need to be communicating with the other taxing districts to see if they would be supportive of this exemption as well, because we need to get a certain number of taxing districts to agree for it to exempt all of the property tax.
We, as we've had this conversation tonight, there's a, there's quite a few times we have to go tap them on the shoulder and talk to them as a group. Um, I would strongly encourage the staff to have one conversation, probably more at the executive level about it and just package the whole strategy together. Because that's, that's gonna make it a lot easier for people to understand. Steve?
You realize in the Springfield urban renewal area, they're already doing that. So, remember that.
Yeah. Okay, um, do you have more questions that we need to dig into, Sandy?
Uh, I'll make one comment and then ask a question. So we have hired a housing analyst. Um, and she is graduating from Portland State University in June. So if there are other um, focus areas that council would like us to start working on, we have a little bit more capacity. Um, so either now or um, in, in the fall, um, we can entertain a little bit more discussion about how to move some of this forward since we'll have some more capacity with that additional staff person.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, the, the other piece, and I know that we're gonna sk- we're gonna schedule a work session for uh, the, to continue this conversation in the fall. The, I would really lo- love us to see as a body, right? Like, we've talked strategy, we've talked a lot about a policy options. Is to come back and give us one document with everything we've agreed to. Um, and just summarize all these different conversations. We did a one-sheeter a few years ago that helped us a lot. Um, I think this is probably more in-depth, but uh, we, we really need to get to one document that shows the entire strategy. Alright, Sandy, I, do you have anything else for us? Alright, we are going to adjourn. We have a seven o'clock executive session, so don't go anywhere too quickly. It's on a separate link, so please log on at the right time to that, to the executive session link. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.